Now, Eastside Community Media, in a partnership with Fond du Lac District Library and the Greater Peoria League of Women Voters presents the 2019 Candidate Forums: Race for City of East Peoria Mayor and Commissioner.
...for the League of Women Voters of Greater Peoria, and we are happy, very happy to co-host this tonight with the Fond du Lac Library system. The League, just for your information, is a nonpartisan, issues-oriented, volunteer membership organization committed to open, responsive, and effective government brought about by informed and involved citizens. We have membership both men and women, we just kept the name, throughout Peoria, Tazewell, and Woodford Counties. And I will be your moderator this evening. I'd like to bring Jenna up to talk a little bit about the library as our co-sponsor here.
Hello, my name's Gina Burr, and I'm proud to serve as Director of Fond du Lac District Library. On behalf of the library, the League of Women Voters, and Eastside Community Media, I'd like to welcome you all to tonight's candidate forum. I very much enjoyed coordinating this event. Libraries are all about connecting people with information, and I'm glad we've been able to provide this opportunity to connect the candidates and their views to the deciding voters. Before we begin, I'd like to take a moment to say a few quick thank-yous. First of all, thank you to all of the candidates for your participation, and of course, your willingness to serve. We appreciate your time this evening. I'd also like to thank the League of Women Voters for co-hosting this event with us. This is the first candidate forum the library has hosted, at least amongst the collective memory of our staff, and the League has been wonderful in their guidance and professionalism. Thank you also to the staff of Eastside Community Media for their work to stream and broadcast tonight's event. It is being broadcast live on Eastside Community Television channels, maybe Facebook, depending on how Facebook is going today. But it will also be rebroadcast and available on their website throughout the election, or through the election. I want to thank my library staff as well for their help this evening and in preparation for tonight. Finally, thank you to all of you who are attending here and watching. We hope you find the evening informative and beneficial in making your Election Day choices. Now, without further ado, please welcome back Roberta Parks with the League of Women Voters.
Thank you. I'm thrilled we're partnering with the library. I love libraries. So let me run through the rules for this evening, so you all are aware of how this is going to run. First, I'd ask everybody to turn their cellphones off. We are being televised tonight, so we don't want somebody's phone playing, I don't know, the 1812 Overture in the middle of this. And we'd ask also that you not applaud after individual answers, certainly when the mayoral candidates are done. You can recognize their contribution, and then the same at the end of the commissioner candidates. We don't want to take time away from them. Candidates have previously drawn for order, and candidates will have an opportunity to make opening statements. They'll get two minutes each for their opening statements. You've been all handed, or given the opportunity to write questions on cards. We'd appreciate you continuing to put those in, and we will work through those questions as best we can. Candidates will have one minute to answer their questions. We're going to spend a total of about 35 minutes with the mayoral candidates, and then they'll each have an opportunity to have closing statements, and then we'll switch over to the candidates for commissioner. If you have a question that is specifically directed toward the mayoral candidates versus the commissioner candidates, please mark that on there. We also ask that you not write candidate questions that are geared toward one individual. All candidates will answer all the questions, so please do not ask a question that's directed specifically to one individual. We have our wonderful timers down here who will be timing. Wave your paddles, ladies, so they know. The candidates will get one minute, then 30 seconds, then 15 seconds, and then stop, and I get to use the hook to stop you. And I will, if it's a short sentence, I'll let you finish the sentence. Other than that, I'll just interrupt and ask you to please end your comments at that time. Unfortunately, I can almost guarantee, based on the stack of questions, we won't get through all of them. I will try to combine questions where I can, and I may repeat some of them to the commissioner candidates. So I think that covers all of our rules. When we drew, Mr. Jeffers will go first for the mayoral candidates, and then Mr. Call will go first when he makes my closing statement. So let me get reorganized here, and we'll get ready and get started. First question, which was directed toward mayoral candidates only. How do you lead to build consensus? Oh, I'm sorry. Introduce, see, I told them to interrupt me when I make a mistake, because every time I, yeah, I did. Every time I do this, I make a mistake somewhere along the way. Okay, act like I didn't say that. Let's go back, and we'll go to opening statements. So two minutes. Okay, now I'll look at my questions.
Thank you very much for being here tonight. This is a great night. My name is Tim Jeffers, and I am one of the candidates for mayors for the city of East Peoria. My family, my parents, my dad came to East Peoria in 1948 from East Tennessee to work at Caterpillar. So that's the Jeffers beginnings here in East Peoria. And he worked at Caterpillar 34 years. I worked there 38, retiring three years ago. In all the times we've been here, we've raised our family here, our three daughters. My wife Lynn is here tonight. We've been married almost 40 years. So East Peoria is where we set our roots very deeply, very deeply. I have had the privilege to serve the last 12 years as commissioner on the city council, and my areas of responsibility have been the water department and the wastewater sewer department. And I've had a wonderful time there working with staff, and they are the experts at it. And as a commissioner, you're the overseer, and it's been a joy for me to work with them and get to know so many in the city and around. So why am I running? It's, I believe, I'm not done yet at 12 years. I think I can offer more for the city. I think my experience, not just experience, but proven experience in decision-making over a wide variety of things, a wide variety of topics, and Public Works has given me that opportunity to do that, such a wide variety of interesting things. Those things, plus my background of where I was at Caterpillar on a major rebuild program for machines and so forth. Industry has really helped me a lot, as well as my church affiliation, my board leadership there, Christian Center. As a member, as a volunteer for the South Side Mission, I have a broad range of experiences which I think helped me govern and work for consensus by working with our council. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm John Call. I'm a candidate for mayor of East Peoria. I'm 53 years old, and I'm married to my beautiful wife Allison, and I'm the proud father of four children, Jared, Ashlyn, Genevieve, and Evan. I served six years in the United States Marine Corps. I'm a Gulf War veteran. I've had the privilege of serving on this council as Commissioner of Public Health and Safety for the last four years. My responsibility is on the East Peoria Fire Department. I also serve as the Chairman of the Tazewell County Consolidated Communications Governance Board, and I've been a member of the East Peoria Human Relations Commission since 2012. In what spare time I have left, I have the privilege of serving with an absolutely awesome, all-volunteer nonprofit, the Teresa Tracy Strive to Survive, and I've served as the President of that organization since its inception in 2013. I'm looking forward to this evening's forum. Give everybody out here in the audience an opportunity to ask their questions if they pass through, Roberta. Anyway, I look forward to showing that we have completely different philosophies and approaches. So I appreciate the fact that everybody came out here tonight, and I look forward to answering your questions.
Great. Okay, we'll go back to my first question, and John, you'll answer this first question first. We'll go back and forth. First question, again, I asked at once, but how do you, how do you lead to build consensus?
You lead by example. I mean, it's no different than my time in the Marine Corps. Six years in the leadership roles that I held there, that's first and foremost. I mean, at the end of the day, to me, anyone serving on a council as a civic leader, if you will, you should have some type of effective leadership style. It's about building relationships, and it's not always about feeling that your opinion is the right opinion. It's about doing homework, making sound decisions, and communicating. I cannot stress enough, effective communication gets a lot of things done.
Tim, same question. How do you lead to build consensus?
Experience helps a lot when you're working with the board, or with, in this case, the city council. Experience of knowing your, the strengths of the people you work with, to pull them together and to sincerely ask for their opinions and their statements, and without coming back with criticism off the bat of what they may say. So there should be a very open-minded exchange of ideas that come to the forefront. And as a group works together, then hopefully we work on a resolution towards whatever the issue is, and we don't know what's going to come. We really don't know. And it isn't all contentious. It's very good things. We're choosing between good and better. And I think as we work on consensus, I think we come to a good conclusion. It's my view that as a leader, as the mayor, I have one vote that's like the other four, but I try, and will try, as I have done other boards that I've led, to bring us together for that group consensus by working together and respecting each other and their opinions.
Next question, and Tim, you will answer this one first. Do you support the school facility tax? If so, why? If not, why not?
Okay. Let me first say that this is a school board issue, and it's not, what I say as a member of the city council, take it for what it's worth, but I'll be, I think I will be consistent with this. When I was elected in 2007, I voted to expand the city's capital fund, sales tax fund, which allowed for the construction of Central Junior High and also a large addition at the high school as well as Armstrong. The state has put us in a very tough spot, put the school district in a very tough spot. They have crumbling infrastructure with their schools, and as much as we, none of us want to pay more. In my view is, I would much rather have a sales tax if I'm going to pay more for something versus a property tax increase. I'm on record, I believe that because of the spot ring from the state, yes, I do support the one cent tax, and I believe it can work out the best for us as a whole. There's some negatives about it, but I think as a whole, that's our best option, the school's best option.
Thank you. John, same question.
I'll start by saying very clearly no. I said the same thing when it was on the ballot back in November, and I spoke to this very topic back in October. The city currently shares quarter of a percent of the non-home rule sales tax with our two school districts now, and that's just shy of a million dollars. Here's why no. It's not that I don't support our schools. I do. I have kids in our schools. I went to these schools. It's just a simple position in this seat right here. The risk that it places on the businesses in East Peoria, we have over 900 businesses. I look at the debt obligation. I look at what it costs to bring this development, and there's no way, shape, and form I can go back and put these businesses at risk, which is what it's going to do. And quite honestly, taxation should be the last resort of everything, and unfortunately, in Illinois, it never is.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and John, you will go first. There's been much discussion regarding the form of government in East Peoria. Under the current commission form, East Peoria has traditionally had a city administrator. This position has been vacant since September of 18. What role does this position play, and should it be filled?
Well, just a little history, East Peoria's had the commission form of government for over 100 years. It's worked very effectively. I've said back in the fall, or back in August, whenever it was, when there were two proposals to change the form of government, I didn't support either. It wasn't driven by the people. It was driven by members of the council. I don't believe in that. The city administrator was a decision the council as a whole made, not to renew his contract. I do support having a city administrator, but the decision was made to allow this next council to fill that as they deem necessary. So I think our form of government works very well with the right people. So we'll see how this next council's going to shape up, but I'm still supportive.
Tim, same question.
I think with any form of government, whether it's commission form, city manager, strong mayor, they all have their strong points. Usually, it's been smaller cities that are the commissioner form. One exception to that, as far as nationally, is the city of Portland, Oregon, is commissioner form, and that's interesting how they do that. Let me say that commissioner form can work, and it comes down to the quality of the people you're working with, no matter what style you're in. Take, in job industries, the people you're working with. I believe as overseers, the commissioner form offers some benefit, but at the same time, there are those that believe the city manager that has the professional knowledge to help manage an $80 to $100 million budget, and so I see advantages there. So I can work with either, as mayor, I can work with either system. The people needs to know what, need to know what they're asking for, because what you're asking for may not be as good what you have and vice versa. So I think we can go either way, but it's just, it'll take a long time, or at least a good season to figure it out and do it right.
Thank you. Next question, and Tim, you will start on this one. Are street repairs more important to spend money on than a roundabout?
I think you have to look at the big picture of this, and I understand that very well the sentiment of where people are coming from. The, the funding for the roundabout is a 70%, 30% match. We've known for years our backlog of road repairs. This is no surprise. It has come our way, and the need was presented to us. Along the way, we fought very hard to get the roundabout funding through, from the state. So there's balance there to get more bang for your buck from the state-funded roundabout, but also, I think we can do both, actually. I think we can. And the right priorities, we can do both and take advantage of improving our city across the board. It's a, it's a big question, but it can be done.
John, same question.
I support spending more money on the streets that exist here in East Peoria than some wishless roundabout. I've not minced my words in stating that. You know, I guess I don't understand for all these years how we haven't met the needs of the community in the form of proper street maintenance. We all know we need to spend between $2.5 and $3 million a year just to get them up to what I believe is an acceptable level. So I do not support spending funds that we don't have on a roundabout, and I'm proud of what the council just decided here recently, which was to shift those funds and spend more money on street maintenance this year.
Okay. Next question, and John, you'll go first on this one. How do you plan to involve East Peoria residents in, East Peoria residents in the county's, excuse me, the council's decision-making process? What tools or methods are part of your plan?
Exactly what I've been doing the last four years, community engagement. I see a lot of familiar faces in this audience, a lot of people I don't know, but at the end of the day, I've been an advocate trying to get people to get involved in the city's business. It's your business. We represent you, and at the end of the day, it is about community engagement. You know, there's folks in here from the Richland area. I've been heavily involved down there. I go throughout the community, and that's important to me because I'm your voice. I'm here to represent you and look out for your best interest, and I always take you guys as my top priority in every decision I make. So get involved. See if there's any board opportunities or commissions for you to serve on. Show up at the city council meetings. Don't be afraid to get up and speak. Silence is consent. I've said it a million times.
Thank you. Tim, same question.
My view of getting things involved, one of the first things I would do if elected mayor is that I would have the council get together, working session, or a meet and greet, working session, and it'd be all announced with 309, 86 school board. I'd have us get together with the zoning board, with the police commission, the fire commission workers, the various other boards that we have, that we interact with as a city, that we get to know who they are. That's where I start. Now, at the same time, there is great value, I believe, in having residents be part of a set aside type group that they're part of to help us get to feel the community. So I think I work with the boards, those that serve in public office and give it their time freely, as well as make myself available to work with individuals and groups and clubs around the city as well.
Okay. Okay, here's the obvious question you ask somebody who's running for mayor. What are your top two goals that you would like to accomplish in the next four years if elected?
Top two goals? I would like to say that in the next four years that we spend $10 million on road maintenance. That's number one. Number two would be working to be more efficient and to bring about the $10 million road maintenance. This isn't capital. This is maintenance dollars to get us back where we need to be, where we know we've needed to be, and have ignored it. This knows, this is no secret where we're at today. It's, we, it's brought up, we know, and there's no mystery that we needed to spend the money and we could not get the consensus to get it done. We can get it done. We build the next four. And we need to work together, though, to save money as well, to find more dollars for our streets. Hopefully, the state will give us a nice capital bill here coming up soon that will take care of the large capital needs, but will be able to take care of the maintenance items in-house and in here locally.
John, same question.
So the question was two goals. I have many goals, but number one is to have the city in a better financial position than it is today, and having a record of being fiscally responsible. I think that's a skill set that I can best utilize on your behalf. You know, it's, it's great to have goals, but you need to make sure they're attainable. A little difficult to be attainable when you're not in the best financial shape. So that would be one goal. The second goal would be focusing on the quality of life issues. We talked about streets. It goes back into our recent budget discussions, wants versus needs, and what are the priorities? And I think our priorities need to shift to quality of life. Those would be my goals.
Okay, and John, you'll answer this one first. What would be your plan to encourage residential development within the city of East Peoria? And, and in particular, housing for the over-60 age group, a delightful age group, I'd like to add.
Now, that's a, that's a tough question. One of, one of the things that I would like to seek, and I stated as much in a recent TV interview, is seeking out residential growth. That's something we haven't seen a lot of in East Peoria. I know from a land standpoint, we're landlocked, but there are pockets, there are still areas of opportunity, some of them down here, that there's been discussion for many years about having some type of residential component down here. I'd proactively like to seek that. Sounds like the question came from a senior, senior citizen that was focused on what their possible plans are at the age of 60. Don't know. I think we'd have to seek out developers that would be interested in bringing that type of development to East Peoria. I know these minute timelines are a little tough to get all your, your response time in, but I think it's time we're proactive on the residential growth side. We're losing population, but that's also tied into infrastructure and everything else. Thank you.
Tim, same question.
Oh, I definitely think residential growth is, is great, great question, and we do have a strong senior candidate, you know, population here in East Peoria. We do offer homeowners the senior water discount, which may not seem like much, but it saves them a couple hundred dollars a year roughly or more. So we do provide that, but I think emphasizing the safety that we have here in East Peoria, the quality of life that we do have for seniors is great. Strong schools helps residential development as well. People want to move here. Of course, it takes jobs, but our fee structure is very competitive here in East Peoria. We don't probably do a good job of advertising ourself. While we seem landlocked in some areas, we're wide open to the south. We really are in the Pine Crest, Mueller, Springfield area in that direction. So we have the opportunity there for great growth. It also, though, takes great jobs, and I think we have a great fee structure to encourage developers. We just need to sell it better ourself.
Okay. So we have two questions here that are, appear to be related. Concerned about workers' comp claims for the city of East Peoria and the council approving large settlements relating to HR issues. So the, the point of the question is, what should the council be doing to try to reduce these types of expenditures? And Tim, you go first.
I'm not familiar with what the questionnaire might be referring to as large settlements in HR areas. Workman's compensation is based upon a set structure, injuries on the job that occur that the city has for their employees. We've had years, we've had very low workman's compensation claims. We've had, last couple of years, we've had a spike in those injuries and the paid time that it costs us. Now, that is governed not by the city policy, and I, I'm not going to say that there, these people that receive this, these workman comp claims, it's not fraud as it might be thought of in some ways. Maybe there is. I don't know. But we operate, and we don't micromanage that, but we do, we are aware of our costs, and it's one that we, whether it's working and training our employees to work more safely and more physically fit, that's, that's something we can do and have done, but it's something we have to keep an eye on.
Thank you. John?
I have a different perspective, quite honestly. I've been pretty vocal about the worker comp claims which run rampant. Not to say injuries don't happen. State law needs reform, number one. He's correct in that statement that some things we can't regulate. So what you can regulate is you can pay attention. And we've paid out over $3.5 million, $3.5 million, out of the general fund in the last 12 years in settlements. And the problem is, and it's not an HR issue, it's a fact that as city leaders, part of our responsibility is looking at every aspect of this business. These are your tax dollars. So it's very easily for someone to go get a lawyer the minute they get injured, and it happens time and time again. I mean, you look at some of these settlements that have been paid out in the 12 years, and you're going to see the same name 10, 12 times. And I think as a city, we need to implement different practices, pay attention to it, bring awareness to it, and help solve that problem.
Okay, the next question, and John, you'll go first. Taxes in East Peoria are high. What can a voter expect from you regarding taxes in the future?
Hey, it's a great question. They are high, and it goes into the residential component and the fact that we've seen people walk out of the city. We've seen great neighbors with kids leave the city because they can't afford taxes. We see houses throughout the city that can't be sold because the taxes are high. It's not the city's problem. We need to look at all the taxing bodies on your property tax bill. The city's portion represents about 13.2% of your tax bill. And I'm proud of my record of voting each and every year in this term of office to keep the rate equivalent. That's very important to me. I think it's the responsibility of every taxing body to make sure that we're using your funds wisely. The question, honestly, should go towards some of these other taxing bodies, and I wish people paid more attention, and I ask that you do. But if I'm mayor, I can tell you right now, I'm going to continue keeping the property tax rate equivalent. It's important.
Tim, same question.
Taxes, we live here, of course, and yes, I'd say I wish they were lower. But I would say this, and it's, it is true that 15% or less of your tax bill is the city's portion of that tax bill. 60% is your school's. And one way to hopefully keep your tax bills lower is, this initiative that's being spoke of has the potential to help keep those tax rates lower. The city's had great success with our sales tax and development, generating millions of dollars, and that's helped keep our tax rates low. It really has. And in days ahead, that should even increase. So I think that's our hedge that we've built into the system to where economic growth is going to drive our expenses down as far as you as an individual. We do include it in your tax bill, full-time policing, obviously, police and fire protection, the best south of I-80. You get that, and your garbage fees also included with your taxes, and that's unlike some other areas of cities, like Morton, that doesn't have that. They have a great rate as a result.
Okay, I'm going to combine two questions, because they're kind of related. Questions are about professional experiences that you've had, either with budgeting or with negotiations and collective bargaining agreements. So can you explain either or both? Professional experiences you've had with collective bargaining agreements, negotiating collective bargaining agreements, or preparing large budgets? And, Tim, you go first.
I mentioned I worked at Caterpillar for 38 years, retiring three years ago, and I worked the last 24 years in defense and federal products. In the last 15 years in defense products, I worked as part of a military machine rebuild program, which had an annual budget of about 40, or receives annual budget of about $45 million. I had about, all those dollars went across my desk, and I, while I was not the program manager, I worked with invoicing, I worked with costs, I worked with parts and so forth. And so we had some large spreadsheets. My experience there has helped me understand some of the large numbers we see in Public Works. and I understand the cost of things and that. No, I have not negotiated contracts, I have not. I have negotiated salary packages for leaders in the different organizations I have served in, Christian Center, my church, to example. So, I think I have a good sense of the business world, working with dealers and so forth, and expenses with the government contractors. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, my professional career, and it dates, honestly, back in the Marine Corps. You know, the section that I led up, just like any military unit, you have a budget. So, for six years, had that experience. However, in the last 20-some years since I've been out, since '91, in sales, which I've been in this entire career, we work off of budgets, we live off of budgets, we get paid off of budgets. Budgets, performance, it's all tied together. On the city council, there's not one person that sits on the city council that's not part of a budget process. Our city budget's about $55 million. It's higher this year with the wastewater treatment plant. I have negotiated a contract, negotiated the last contract with our local fire department, our fire department's local, and we're preparing to do the same here in the next week or two. I'm also in process of negotiating a contract with the Tazewell County Communicator.
Next question, and John, you'll go first on this one, yeah. Do you believe homelessness is a concern in East Peoria? If so, what role should the city play in addressing this issue?
That's a tough one, because I honestly, I believe homelessness is a problem probably in every community, whether you see it that way or not. And here's why I say that. A lot of times, East Peoria is a little different. Peoria, you go across the river, and you see it every day in downtown area. Not so much here. But what defines homelessness? You know, there's a Moms Who Care program at East Peoria Community High School that people may or may not be aware of. It's an awesome program ran by awesome women. And I think people would be surprised at the poverty level in East Peoria. And what deems homelessness? This is something that's a pretty tough pill to swallow, but there's a lot of kids that you'd be surprised, I believe, are homeless, and a lot of adults. You could be staying at a relative, you could be staying somewhere else. So, that's a hard one to gauge here. Not going to pretend to be an expert, but I...
Thank you. Tim, same question. Do you believe homelessness is an issue, and what would you do to address it?
I don't believe in East Peoria that homelessness is as rampant as you would see publicly, although some of the public buildings we have, even here, we have people that drop in and spend a lot of time in here, and you wonder, where do they live? And I don't know. This may be the best place they want to go. I have volunteered the last three years for the Southside Mission of Peoria, which serves the, one of the lowest-income zip codes in the United States. So, I am familiar with homelessness and those that are underemployed and living in poverty. We see it in our school system, we can know very well through the lunch program and so forth. We see poverty there, which, how far does that reach down? It reaches down to a large percentage, you know, some areas approach a 50% poverty level. So, we have that issue there. And what roles the city have to work with our neighborhoods and be aware of that, and actually be able to work with our nonprofits to help gear help to them to get the right place, to get that service, such as Southside Mission does in Peoria, we can do it here with others.
Thank you. Okay, next question, and Tim, you'll go first. There are many code violations, such as junk in yards, grass that isn't cut in the summer, et cetera. How do you plan to get residents to follow the code?
In my view, the code enforcement and the cost, the penalty, is meant to be the driver to change behavior. And so, we've got to be able to do that and do it effectively and do it consistently across all areas of the city. I think we need to provide cleanup weeks, and I'll go on record, I think two annually would be a way to, or semi, one each every six months. Spring and fall goes a long ways to help those areas clean up and stay ahead of things. So, that's probably an item that we could go back to and enlarge. There may be other ways. We could pick up large items of garbage and so forth and trash. But I think code enforcement has to have the hammer to make it work in all communities around our city. We're a community of about five different towns, all in one, but we need to do it consistently across the board, not just one area, but across the board.
Okay. John, same question.
Yeah, the code enforcement, I know we've kind of retooled that in the last number of years, but I think there's an education component that needs to come along with that. And I'll just, where am I going with this? Down in the Richland area, you know, when I became involved down there and I started working with our code enforcement folks, we went down there to try to not just target that area, but help the neighbors down there clean some of those areas up. We came out with the wrong approach, and I'll be the first to tell you. It was a great experience for me, because you can't just go out and start enforcing code enforcement without the education component. A lot of times, people, when you haven't done it for 40 years, they have no idea what the codes are. So, I think the key there is not just consistently, consistency across the city, but the education component. Don't just go out and slap a sticker on somebody's car. Go up and knock on the door, engage that individual, explain to them what the code is, give them an opportunity, remedy the code, but we need to be consistent throughout the city.
Thank you. Next question is, do you have concerns about the current debt level that the city is carrying? And if so, what should the city do to try to address that in the future? I'm sorry, you start, yes. I'm sorry, I forgot.
Wow, yeah, I've been pretty vocal about that for a number of years. Our annual payment, we're sitting on about $122 million worth of debt obligations. It is concerning, and here's why. Not that we're not covering it right now, don't misunderstand me, we are. But it just takes one little hiccup, and that debt is backed by property tax holders here in East Peoria. So, it's very important that we make everything work, absolutely everything work. We have a big investment. But I do have concerns about that, and I think it's going to restrict what we can and can't do over the next number of years. We currently, our annual debt payment's about $10.6 million. That'll drop off to about 9.8 in 2023, and it'll cut off, cut in about half in 2028. So, I think what we do in the next seven to eight years, we have to do so in a fiscally responsible manner, and that's what I intend on doing.
Tim, same question.
A big majority of the debt we have, I'll call it investment versus just debt. Now, it is, our bills to be paid, it's like a mortgage on your house. You pay it off, you have an asset there to show you. In my view, as an example, the Levy District, the return on investment there, yes, it's giving us money today that we would not have had without the investment, to the tune of a million and a half dollars. And that amount grows, as John said, as our debt drops off, our profit goes up. And in 2028, yeah, it's around $8 million, money that we do not make now. So, investment, yes, we need to keep an eye on that. It isn't like if we didn't spend this money, we have an extra $100 million for streets, but the investments pay back and allow us the dollars to pay for these city services and keep your taxes low. It's a concern, but we need to keep investing and working with business to grow our economy, grow sales tax, grow property tax, to grow our revenues, to make us more solvent, and we're on a good debt level schedule, debt payment schedule to reach those goals.
Okay. John, same question, please. Oh, I'm sorry, all right, you're right, nevermind. Okay, this will be, no, that's all right. It's only two mistakes I've made so far. Just wait till I get to where there's five of them. It'll get better or worse. Okay, this will be our last question, then we'll go to closing statements. Please tell us what you think is East Peoria's greatest asset and what is East Peoria's greatest liability? And, Tim, you get to go first.
I believe our greatest asset here in East Peoria, frankly, is our people. I've been here my whole life, and that may be a gratuitous thing to say, but it's our greatest asset. It really is our communities, our schools, our families, our places of worship. I think sometimes gets forgotten, and this is the first Wednesday of Advent, or, excuse me, of Lent, excuse me, different season of Lent, and it's a holy time for those in our community who worship in that way. We have a great community that works together to live out their values, and that's our greatest asset, our biggest liability. I think right now, it's probably in Springfield, as far as the help we need for our schools, for our city, the mandates, the pension costs that are being driven up, not because of our workers, but because of the state's mismanagement and mandates there. So, our communities, our citizens, our worship, our schools, they're our allies. We are not your enemies as city government. We are not your enemies. But I do believe Springfield has a long way to come to be on our side.
Thank you.
So, Tim got to go first, and he had a great answer, because it'd be the same thing I'm going to say, which is the people, obviously. You know, as a native of East Peoria, I grew up here. Aside from my six years off in the service, this has been my home, and it's where we've raised our four kids. And I tell you what, this community is full of loving, caring, good people that look out for each other. Working in the nonprofit sector as a volunteer, I can tell you, this community is so giving. And I look at all the nonprofits that come to East Peoria seeking help, and they get it. And this town's very supportive. So, without a question, the people. The liability, we just talked about it in the last question, which is our debt. It's concerning to me. So, I think it's very important moving forward. We do continue to grow, but we do so in a fiscally sound manner.
Okay, now, we'll go to closing statements, and John gets to make his one-minute closing statement first, and then, Tim.
Very good, one minute, and they're very strict on that. All right. Well, first of all, thank each and every one of you for taking time out of your busy life to come down here and sit with us, ask us questions, get to know us. I ask over the next three weeks that you educate yourself, not just on what you heard tonight, but what you've seen played out in the last four versus 12 years. To me, it's going to boil down to this. My term on the council, I've been the voice of reason with your tax dollar. I've been the person that says what needs to be said, and I've always put the citizens as my number-one top priority when I've conducted the city's business. You're going to get that out of me. I'm going to look you in the eyes, I'm going to be very honest with you. May not be what you want to hear, but it's what you need to hear. And at the end of the day, it's about effective leadership, integrity, and most of all, accountability. So, I'd appreciate your vote on April 2nd for John Call. Thank you.
Tim, somebody's phone's going off, and it sounds like it's up here, guys. Okay, well, it'll stop ringing soon. It's not mine, mine is off, and that's just how mine rings. Okay, the phone's gone now. All right, sorry for that interruption.
Okay. As I said in my opening, it's been my privilege to serve the last 12 years here in the city of East Peoria on the city council as commissioner. And it's not just been 12 years putting in the time, punching the clock. It's been actually a joy to do, and it's also been one of discovery. I think it's one thing to be able to have the discernment to say, yes, we have a problem, we have a problem, and we all have different opinions of what caused the problem. But where I think I bring something else to the table is not just being able to highlight a problem, which I can do, but it's also suggesting working together with our entire council and those that we deal with, that we can't, can we not just work together and find this solution and go this way or that? I believe there's a solution for every problem we face. We may not know what it is yet, but by working together, we can get there. I believe that with all my being, it's my life, it's the way I've lived my life, with my family, with my community, with my faith structure, so we can do it.
Thank you. Please join me in thanking Mr. Jeffries and Mr. Hall. It is a significant commitment to run for public office and to serve in public office, so we are very appreciative of the willingness of the folks in this room who are willing to do that. These gentlemen are welcome to stay while we switch over to the commissioners, or they can exit stage right if they choose to do that, and that's your call. Okay, so, all right, now I have to switch gears and call different names and get these questions in order. So, they're starting asking questions or answering questions and doing their opening statements in this order with Mr. Sales first, Mr. Decker, Mr. Hill, Mr. Matheny, and Mr. Mingus. And I hope I keep that straight. I have a cheat sheet here to help that happen. So, we will start again with two-minute opening statements, and Mr. Sales, you're first.
Hi, my name is Norm Sales. I'm a lifelong East Peoria resident. I grew up in an unincorporated area between Creve Court and East Peoria until East Peoria finally annexed the area that I grew up in. I'm married for 25, no, about 34 years. Took a minute there, so. I have a lot of a business experience. I worked for, I'm retired from DHL Worldwide Express, where I was a regional manager. I had the complete state of Illinois, which included six stations, 500 employees, and four aircraft operations. For those of you that don't know what DHL Express is, it's an air freight company, and our main focus was international. So, I had an $18 million budget, so I have a lot of business experience. And I traveled a lot, so consequently, I was not able to get involved in any local community efforts or politics. In fact, one time, my wife said, "I can put up with somebody for two days." So, I'm not sure what she meant with that. So, I finally decided, okay, it's about time to retire, to get out of this rat race. So, I have, I retired. I have one son that lives here, he's actually a stepson. He lives about a mile away from me, and my purpose for running is to make this community progressive to where he can enjoy the same quality of life that I grew up in. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Decker.
My name is Dan Decker. I appreciate this forum, appreciate the League of Women Voters. We don't have an opportunity very often to get in front of the voters, so appreciate this opportunity. Graduated, I'm 45 years old, graduated from East Peoria Community High School in 1991. I, after that, went to college, and I became a, I've always lived my life working in emergency services. I've worked for 21-plus years on the East Peoria Fire Department, and I am proud of it. I love it. I see great things, I've seen some bad things, but I enjoy my job, I enjoy my life. I got that from, I got a lot of things from my dad. My dad was a firefighter as well, and my dad loved the city of East Peoria. Being around him is what, I think, gave me my original desire to be on the city council. Very early on, I got to know some commissioners and mayors, and it was something that I, it was intriguing to me. One thing, I always take this opportunity, so I don't forget later, I really appreciate my family, because without them, without their support, my wife Christie's here, three kids, that I wouldn't be able to do this. Sometimes, it takes an awful lot of time, and I enjoy that. I enjoy stopping, talking with people at Kroger, answering phone calls in the middle of the morning, in the middle of the evening, in the middle of the night sometimes, and I enjoy it. I enjoy getting to know people, and I wouldn't be able to do that without their support. So, I always take this opportunity to thank them, and I really mean it.
Okay. Mr. Hill.
Hi, I'm Mark Hill. I'm also a native of East Peoria. My wife of 31 years is also born and raised here. We've raised our four children here. My background, a little bit of my education, I'm proud to say I graduated from East Peoria Community High School in 1983. Went on to Eureka College and got a Bachelor's of Science in Computer Science and Business Administration. And then later, as a working adult and father of four, I went back and earned an MBA from the University of Illinois. I've committed my life to others and community, in the community. I've been part of the Cub Scout Pack, I've been, I've led that pack, 147 East Peoria. I've also been, I was a founding member with some great members, great other people, with the Teresa Tracy Strive to Survive. You heard John mention that. I operated as the treasurer for five years for that. East Peoria Community Baseball, I was on the board there and treasurer there. Professionally, I've been, professionally, I started as an information technology consultant for 17 years. And for the last 14 years, I've worked for Caterpillar in various roles. For 19 years, I've been a certified project management professional, so I have extensive experience in planning, capital planning, budgeting, cost management, the whole risk management, team building, delivering results with teams. And so, with that, that I bring those skills to the, offered to the table, and I look forward to serving the people of East Peoria.
Okay. Mr. Matheny.
Thank you. And I want to thank all you for coming this evening. My name is Steve Matheny. As you know, I'm running for commissioner to be on our city council. I was born and raised in Bradley, Illinois, and I moved down to this area in 1992. The original plan, I worked for waste management, the original plan was to be here a couple, three years, and then I wanted to go off to the corporate world and thought I could be the CEO of the company, which was a long shot, but that I would move up the corporate chain. And after I got here, I loved it, and I loved this community, so I stayed here. And I got married, and I have two children in this community. In 18 days, I'll have, I'll be married, and we plan to still live here in this community. In 18 days, I'll have, I'll be married, and we plan to still live here in this community, of course. My professional career at Waste Management, I did what we called industrial sales. I told everybody I sold air. Landfills have so much airspace in them, and I was meeting with customers to fill up our airspace. On the, my community involvement part, I've always been very active in the Chamber. I've been on the Chamber Board. I've also been a Chamber Ambassador. For the last 14 years, I've served on the East Peoria Community High School Board and served as president four years out of those 14 years. I have experience with budget. I have experience in the boardroom and believe that I work with getting a consensus with everybody in the board, and I try to listen to everybody else's thoughts and opinions before I formulate my decision. But most importantly, I would want to, would say that I would always listen to my constituents. Thank you, and I hope you vote for me, Steve Matheny.
Okay. Now we'll go to questions, and Mr. Dan Decker.
Mistake number three. Just joking.
Maybe it's just a bad, I'm not moderating the forum we're having tomorrow night, so somebody else will have an opportunity to make mistakes that time, so I apologize.
No, you're fine. Hi, my name is Seth Mingus. Like a lot of the other candidates, I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters. I'd like to thank Fond du Lac District Library for hosting this, and I'd like to thank all of you for coming out to get to know us a little bit and submit some questions. Personally, I also am a lifelong resident of East Peoria. My wife is also a lifelong resident of East Peoria. As I said, I'm married to my wife Patricia. We've been married for 14 years. We have three kids. Julie is 11, Jolie is nine, and Lincoln is four, so they keep us kinda busy at home, running around with their activities. Professionally, I'm an educator. I've been an educator for the past 16 years. I started my career at East Peoria Central Junior High School, where I taught history, taught a reading class. I coached a variety of sports. I was the athletic director. Decided I wanted to get into administration and got a dean's job at Peking Community High School, where I did that for a year, and then was promoted to an assistant principal, where I did that for four years. Then I decided I wanted to maybe do something a little bit more, so I went and got my educational specialist degree to become a superintendent, and I am currently the principal and superintendent at South Peking Grade School. Community involvement, I was trying to do the math in my head real quick, and math was not my strong suit. I was a history teacher. But I was elected to the Fond du Lac District Library when I was 21 and served six years on that board. And in fact, when I was on that board, that's when the plans for this building started. And then from there, I was on the Fond du Lac Township Board, where I served for six years, and then for the past five years, I've been on the Tazewell County Board. I also volunteer in the East Peoria Youth Basketball Board and have done that for two years. So I look forward to the opportunity to answer some questions from you guys, and appreciate you coming out.
And my apologies. Okay, now we'll go to the first question, and we, Dan Decker will answer first on this one, and we'll just keep rotating around, moving who answers first each time. So let me go back to the question about what are your top two goals, what are the top two goals you would like to see the council accomplish in the next four years? Dan?
When I talk about streets, it's not something that is a campaign topic for me. For 12 years now, I've been talking about the streets. Something that we, I've realized that we have to do better at. The streets in East Peoria are in bad shape. Every year, I bring forward to the council, and the council has been receptive, I can't criticize anyone, I bring forward to the council examples of what's going on with our streets. The only thing is trying to figure out how to pay for those. That's the first one. Second, safety in our community. Safety in our community is of utmost importance, obviously. We, as one of the questions, we'll talk about it later, there, we do have homeless population in East Peoria. We have some crime issues in East Peoria. Our cops do a great job, but they, at times, need more resources. So safety and infrastructure, streets, are my two main goals.
Same question, Mark. What are your top two goals you'd like the council to accomplish in the first four years?
Okay, top two goals. The basic services is, to me, should be a focus, and it's been a topic tonight. Again, it goes back to roads. We don't have enough money to give towards roads. When you look, look at what's been appropriated, those decisions, the money's been put elsewhere. So to me, focusing back on basic services and finding a way to make a plan that ensures that we put a minimum of $2.5 million, whatever the goal, and I believe that was the goal that stated in the State of the Streets address recently, make sure that was planned and follow the plan. So another goal is to really focus on the city's health and safety within, within the city itself, and specifically the workman's comp area, because again, I had a different number over, over the last 10 years of, you know, I think incurred costs were closer to $8 million, so putting a plan in place to focus on that.
Okay, thank you. Steve?
Well, my, my two goals, the first goal is gonna be a refrain from everyone else. I mean, we need to work on the streets and the basic services, and we need, and need to reprioritize a little bit on that. My second goal would be to continue to see economic growth here. One of the reasons the city's been successful in the last 20 to 30 years is the economic growth. So we need to continue to find more tenants for the Levy District, and we need to find more tenants around Bass Pro Shop and work, work with industry to do that.
Okay. Seth?
Eight years ago, I ran for City Council, and this is almost like deja vu, because every single person up here answering the question said streets. Here we are eight years later, and we are giving the exact same answer that we gave then. So my number-one goal is that the question that we get four years from now when we are running is not how can, how can, why are our streets in bad shape? It's how can we continue the improvement that you guys have done the past four years on the streets? Because talking about it's one thing, actually reallocating money to do it is another thing. So that's one goal of mine. And I'd like to couple something off Steve's if I have time, but my second goal is to have the form of government figured out. We're probably gonna talk a lot about that, or at least a little bit about that, tonight. That's a four-year plan. I mean, we can't fix that this year or next year. That's something that the next council will determine for the following council. So I'd like to spend time to really analyze that and come up with a good collective answer that's best for the city.
Okay. And Norm, same question.
My number-one goal would be to improve our financial position. I know we've had a lot of growth, but we've also incurred a lot of debt. Consequently, the majority of the citizens of East Peoria have not been able to participate in this growth. It's not benefiting them because, number one, they're driving on terrible roads. I live on Springfield Road in East Peoria. Last year alone, we had 11 water main breaks, and of course, that puts more holes in the road. So, you know, if we don't address our financial picture, we're not gonna be able to grow our city and prosper and share it with all of our citizens.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and Mark, you'll go first. What importance do you put on community amenities such as bike paths, pedestrian trails, streetscapes, public art, et cetera? What role does the city play in supporting these types of amenities?
Well, when we talked about, you know, residential growth and attracting people to the city, to me, I think those, the bike paths, those amenities are very important to being able to attract, and I'm not gonna even say a class of, you know, the millennials or new people that wanna get out, and so to me, it's very important, and I think the city needs to work and figure out, again, how to work those into the capital budgets to make those, make those happen.
Steve, same question. Importance on amenities.
Well, that's a, that's a great question, because I think quality of life is important. And I think actually, one of the questions that was for the Mayors that talked about something for senior citizens for housing, but that's all part of the amenities. The ability to walk, the ability to ride a bike somewhere, to take advantage of the views we get of the riverfront and those kind of things are all important parts that once you get them done and you get them built, the maintenance on them isn't as expensive. So it's easier for us to do something like that. And I think that helps to draw people when they feel like that, and it has more of a friendly feel for a community.
Okay. Seth?
I also think they're important. I think they improve the quality of life in any community that would have them. I will say, though, that we have to be careful, or the next council has to be careful, that we don't get wrapped up into things like that at the expense of the things that we just talked about. Everything costs money, and I think that you have to look and prioritize. And oftentimes, what happens when you have a budget, I have a budget at school, and I know based on my budget, the last things that we always end up spending on are our infrastructure improvements, because you can't see them. And then we buy new playground equipment or something like that that's really good, but we have pipes that leak. And so I'm all for those, but I do think you have to do that within reason and not at the expense of the infrastructure that we desperately need in this community.
Okay. Norm?
I also think those are very important things for all of the citizens of Illinois. It improves the quality of life. It gets people out and exercising, but one of the problems, we don't, we haven't prioritized our economic development in the last 12 years. We spent $43 million on the Bass Pro Shop. Last year, we had to take $800,000 out of the general fund to pay that shortfall. We're giving 1% of the sales tax away to the developer of the Levy District. So unless we start changing how we do business, we're not gonna have money for these important things for the majority of our citizens here in, in East Peoria.
Okay. Dan, same question.
Thank you. Couple of years ago, I was volunteering at band camp with the East Peoria High School Band, and Chuck Nagel was there. We were sitting in the grass, talking, and we were talking about different amenities in the school, and we were comparing East Peoria High School with some others. And he said, I was asking him about the importance of something. He said, "Dan, you notice where we're sitting here? We're sitting in nice plush green grass. It's cut well, it looks good." He said, "We could've sat over there, it's brown grass, just fine." He said, "People choose to go where it is nicer. If we want to attract people to East Peoria, we have to provide the amenities." And I think it is the responsibility of the council to do what's necessary to provide those amenities. Years ago, the council passed a resolution or ordinance to any future development, any future neighborhoods must put in sidewalks. Things like that are important. It's important to have those things that will help draw, attract. I want my kids to live here when they grow up and have children of their own.
Okay, thank you. Next question, and Steve, you will answer this one first. How will you work to increase job opportunities for East Peoria residents?
Well, I think to increase our job opportunities for East Peoria residents, I think it really starts, it'll start back at the junior high and the high school. And we have some programs there now at both those schools, but to start training and working with the industry, we've got a training program now with Caterpillar, but we have to have programs like that, where we start to train the people. And then secondly, we have to, the people that are already past the high school age, we have to afford them opportunities and hopefully work with our partnership with ICC to, again, to get them trained into new skills, so they can join the workforce.
Okay. Seth, same question.
I'll start. I'm an educator, as I said, so I think Steve's answer is, is perfect. I mean, it starts by training your kids young, whether it's through career and technical education department at the high school, the relationship that I know that the, the high school has with, with ICC. But I'll go one step further. It's about recruiting the kids who leave our community to go away to school, whether that's to college, or whether that's to the military, to get them to come back here to live and work. And so it's, it's about developing the types of jobs that, that they need. I saw somewhere, read somewhere, that the kids who are like sitting there in the crowd, the jobs that they're gonna work, we haven't even thought of yet. Like, those jobs haven't even been developed. That's, that's where we are going. So it's about being on the cutting edge of what, where are the new jobs? What business can we recruit that we can bring our homegrown kids back for, so that we have a strong community?
Norm, same question.
I don't think our job opportunity for young people in East Peoria in particular is real well. I think the educational system does give them alternatives to, let's, you know, let's face it, there's a certain segment of these young individuals that need to be going to trade schools or something of that nature, and I think those opportunities are available for them, and I think the high school and ICC both do a very good job in that. But we haven't done a good job in attracting any industry. If we look at most of the jobs that have been attracted down here, or built down here in our Levy District and a Bass Pro, they're all lower-paying retail jobs, which really you're not gonna be able to support a family, let alone hardly support yourself on.
Okay. Dan?
I believe it starts with education. We have to have an educational system that promotes growth in our kids. You know, East Peoria High School, it has, of all the surrounding communities, it has the most college courses while they are still in high school. It's an excellent thing. People don't know that. We need to promote that to get more people to East Peoria. The City Council needs to provide an environment for growth. We need to continue with our development to make sure that developers want to bring things here. Two areas that I think we should focus on, first of all, Mr. Sales mentioned trades. Our trades, my wife and I were talking about a few days ago, about how the trades industry is booming, how there are going to be more jobs in the trades. Second is medicine. We have one of the best medical facilities, areas throughout the Midwest. We need to capitalize on that. We have locations in East Peoria that medical clinics can come here, and we need to take advantage of it.
Okay. Mark?
Okay. One of the things I, I would agree with is education. One of the things that, that I, that I'd really like to see, not city-sponsored, but I'd like to see a program similar that they have in Peoria, where East Peoria residents, you know, based on how long they've lived, they ended up having, you know, a foundation that enables, that contributes to their education going to ICC. Again, it's, I'll say, self-fulfilling. We, the scholarship type, you know, East Peoria first would, would, again, promote kids to go to college, and tech school, not just college alone, as we've said. The other thing, the, I think we need to really look at small, medium business. You know, large companies grow out of small, medium business, and even look, it'd be exciting to have an incubator for those small, medium businesses to get them started here in East Peoria.
Okay. Next question, and Seth, you'll go first on this one. East Peoria taxes are high. What can a voter expect from you regarding taxes in the future? And I didn't clarify this, but I believe this relates not just to property tax, but sales tax also.
Well, I think, East Peoria, I'm gonna echo what one of the other candidates said, they are high. I mean, and, and to go back, it's not all the City of East Peoria. Majority of your taxes are the school districts, so that's already been established in other candidates' answers. What I would say is, we can't look backwards, because looking backwards doesn't get it, get us anywhere. We have to look forward with where we're going. And taxes are, is how we generate revenue, or how government entities generate revenue. It's about spending that revenue. And the way you cut taxes, or the way you guarantee you don't need as much revenue, is you don't spend as much money. And I think that that's the key to the taxes, whether you're talking about the school, whether you're talking about the city, or you're talking about a school district, is you have to be financially responsible, spend your money the correct way, so that you do not have to look at increasing taxes. Government entities are doing that, because they can't afford to live within their means. And I don't wanna have, I won't be that person. I'm not somebody who's for increasing taxes, but I think we have to look at how we spend our money to ensure that we are not putting ourselves in a situation where we have to.
Thank you. Norm?
Well, I don't, run a question by me one more time.
Taxes in East Peoria are high. What can a voter expect from you regarding both sales and property tax in the future?
If you look back on taxes for the last few years, the city has remained pretty flat. What most citizens don't understand is, I've been out talking to people, everybody complains about taxes. They just keep going up, and I'm driving on terrible roads. But, you know, they don't really understand what bodies are raising those taxes, and it happens to be the schools and the counties and everything else, but our city. I think we're actually in pretty good shape. I don't think we necessarily have a revenue problem in the City of East Peoria. I think we have a spending problem and a priority problem. And I'll use a roundabout as an example. I would think a $5,000 turn lane going into Steak and Shake and a hotel there would solve part of the congestion in there. I don't think we need to spend all this money on a roundabout. So that's just one example of where we're spending money where we don't need it.
Thank you. Dan, same question.
The only way we're ever gonna be able to get away from taxes is to continue our development and make it stronger. Our future in East Peoria is extremely bright. Some of the other candidates, mayor candidates, mentioned 2028. That is the point when our, our debt drops off to the point where we will be making a substantial amount of money, more than we do now. Someone else mentioned that our, we, our developer makes money. Yes, I hope they do, because when they make money, we make more. Our development will keep us keeping our taxes low. Our development will keep us keeping our taxes low. The city of East Peoria has kept your taxes flat since, I think, about 1999, if I'm not mistaken, a long time. Your property taxes, yes, the school districts, the park districts, we need to get involved with them to figure out ways to help keep those down. But the only way we're going to stay off the reliance of taxes is through development, so we can make more with what we can grow out of East Peoria.
Thank you. Mark?
It's been established that, again, the city's flat, other taxing bodies, that's where I would encourage all of you informed voters to take a look at those taxing bodies, and who's on those boards, and who's raising those taxes, because, again, you know, that's contributing to our taxes going up. But with that being said, that's a holistic problem that we, all the taxing bodies, would need to come together to begin to address. Everybody doesn't have enough money, so, again, they're raising their taxes consistently on those other taxing bodies. So one of the things with the sales tax, we've got to be very careful, you know, I'm not sure how many of you know the various taxing amounts. You know, if you're in Farm Creek and the Target area, it's already nine and a half as of July of last year. Costco's nine. We add another percent to that, we're paying 10% tax. We may drive business out of East Peoria if we get up to 10% tax, so.
Okay, Steve?
I'm not, I'm like everyone. I get a tax bill every year, and I don't like what it looks like, and it continues to go up every year. At the same time, decisions we make, as far as taxes, when we, when I make a decision about taxes, or about long-term debt that we have, both those decisions, I take very serious and take a lot of consideration before I make any kind of decision like that, because they do have long-term effects. As far as the countywide sales tax, I would prefer it, as opposed, for me, I would prefer that if the schools were able to come back to the city, to the next council, and see about extending the present agreement they have right now, the quarter cent, and I'm opposed to the 1% tax.
Okay. I'm shuffling papers, sorry. Next question, and we will start with Norm. What are your thoughts on pension eligibility for serving on the council in view of the pension issues we have in the state of Illinois?
I don't think people that serve on the city council for pension, I don't think we should be eligible for pension. That is your question, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I'm getting a pension. I'm getting social security. I consider serving on this council as service, giving back to my community. To me, politics is not a career. The longer you stay in a job in politics, it appears to me, and I don't care which level it is, the farther or the less you remember who puts you there. So consequently, I don't think that we should be entitled to a pension at all.
Dan?
When I was first elected, it wasn't even an option. I didn't even realize that I was going into a pension system. I was just told, hey, sign here, this is what you do, this is what happens. Didn't know that there were options. Years went on, and some of those discussions came up. So when it was posed to us on the city council, I was one of those that voted to take ourselves out of the pension system. One of the reasons being that the IMRF, is what it was, is they imposed this new law, rule, that you actually had to track or document the number of hours per week that you spend. The threshold was 20 hours a week. Now, I guarantee you, many, many weeks over 20 hours, and if I look at an average, it's probably about right, the amount of time I spend on the phone and everything else. However, I didn't want to document it, that just wasn't something I wanted to do. To me, that wasn't important. Service is important to me, so it was an easy choice for me to give that up. I think it was the right thing to do, I still support that.
Mark?
I too believe that the city council should not be participating in the pension program, and as Dan already stated, the IMRF had made requirements, I believe, of 1,000 hours a week in tracking of that. And so, coming in, I do not believe that the city council should be, it's a part-time job, whether it's 20 hours or not, but whether it's 40 hours, I still don't think they should participate.
Steve?
And I would agree with what the other candidates have said so far. I don't believe, and won't, as a commissioner, participate in the pension, in the IMRF. I just don't, again, it's a part-time job, and I don't, I'm not doing this job because I'm looking for extra retirement income. I'm doing this job because I think I can serve the people of East Peoria.
Seth?
Easiest question that's been asked so far. No, I don't believe that city council members should be in the pension. On the county board, we pulled all our county board members out of the pension program too, so none of us are paying in or will get an IMRF retirement. I mean, I don't want to beat a dead horse with what everybody else said, with 20 hours and documentation and the liability, we could even put the city with paying penalties if somebody didn't have that, it's not worth it, and I would not accept, nor do I think we should be in the pension program.
Okay. Next question, and Dan, you would go first on this one. How can we revitalize some of the older areas of the city, and specifically the Richland area?
One of the first contacts I made when I first ran for city council in East Peoria was Red Butler. Red was from Richland, he knew my dad, when my dad used to work at Two House down there. Hugh, or Bruce Clymore, he also, I hung out with them, I got to know them, and got to know the needs of Richland. I also attended meetings in the Richland community and recognized the needs. My parents actually lived in Richland for a while, it's always been close to our family. I think, as far as revitalization, we have to, we can't just look at one neighborhood. We have to look throughout the city. We have to look at revitalization throughout the community. We can't focus just in one area. Having said that, we have put a lot of effort into Richland over the last few years. I do think that needs to continue, because we have seen some great improvements there. Property owners are happy, they are encouraged and motivated to keep their properties better.
Mark?
I think one way to community revitalization, and specifically in the Richland community, is just that, the community involvement. I was involved, or attended, the recent state-level program where they were sharing the results with the community, and the residents in the Richland community have, take great pride, believe it or not, people, they don't think people do, but they take great pride in their area. And so, I think the, continuing to work those programs, continuing the involvement in those areas will help us revitalize that community specifically.
Okay. Steve?
Well, I believe research is needed. I think we need to look at areas in the country where we've had some great revitalization occur, and then we need to take those practices and come back and see if we can't do the same thing here, as we try to revitalize a Richland community area, the downtown area, that we can take those best practices and use those to make our community better.
Okay. Seth, go ahead, I'm sorry.
The Richland area is an area that's near and dear to my heart. My wife grew up down there, her grandma still lives down there, and I think it has, I have seen improvements in that area in the past few years. And I think the biggest thing with any area is to listen to the people. I mean, what help do they need? Where do they see the biggest issues, or the biggest areas for growth? What resources do they need? And then you take that back, and you look and see what you can, how you can help them, and what resources are available, and you keep that open dialogue and that open communication with the residents, not only in the Richland area, but in every area. I think that's just good community involvement, good practice to do for everybody.
Okay. And Norm, same question, please.
One thing that I've learned in life, that if you help anybody that needs a little bit, they take it to heart, and they run with it. So I think, you know, city dollars should be spent on that, and I don't think it would take a lot of money, but that will start to build a lot of pride in that sector of our city, and I think it would take off, you know, all by itself. But again, it's, some of the people down there, I'm sure, could use some help, any work, volunteer, community efforts that could go down there, as we've seen in some of the other cities, where you go in and you paint a house, especially elderly people. Once you start doing those things, the city pretty well revitalizes itself, or at least that area does.
Okay. Next question, and Mark, you'll answer first. Water and sewer bills have gone up a significant amount. What is being done, what can be done to avoid future hikes?
Well, that one's a good question, because I guess one of the things that, as a, you know, taxpayer myself, the capital prod, sewer capital charge that we all get to share in over five years, and if you know, start at 20%, 15%, 11% and 10%, 10%, something to that degree to raise your bill. To me, I think we need to do a much better job on our reserves. Our reserves of the city are, I don't say at an all-time low, they're low, I think they're about a million, million-two right now. I think we need to do a capital, major capital reserves fund to ease the burden on the taxpayer, because we obviously are going to be paying for this sewer project, 46 and a half million, and there's another 10 million that was not accounted for in that in Phase 5. So I think the major thing is we need to start planning better and reserves.
Thank you. Steve, same question.
Well, and I know, I know it's, I don't enjoy, as I said earlier, I don't enjoy paying more taxes, but this was infrastructure that had gone on so long that it needed to be done, and this was the only way we could do it. So unfortunately, we have to, we have to pay for that infrastructure. I mean, unfortunately, it's got to be paid, and the only avenue really, at the time, was to increase the fees. So it's unfortunate, but it's necessary.
Seth?
I think that an increase in fees is hopefully not a long-term, I mean, I know it'll be there for a while, but it's better than an increase in your property tax rate. A property tax rate increase, as far as what the city would levy, to pay for something like that is going to be a lifetime that continues to build on it. Anytime you have to update infrastructure, it's kind of like what I said earlier, with how my budget, it's the last thing that gets done, but sometimes it has to be done, and then you have a big project that has to be paid for, and it has, exactly that has to happen, is it has to be paid for. So I think, looking back is one thing, like I said, the best thing to do is look forward, and I think looking forward, we need to constantly be analyzing, constantly be evaluating all of our infrastructure, all of our city services, and make sure that we continue to do the upgrades and updates as we can do them, and we allocate the money in order to do that. And that means prioritizing those things over certain other things.
Okay. Norm?
I think a good part of that increase was for the wastewater protection plan, and talking to friends that don't live in the city of East Peoria, that live in neighboring communities, we're paying basically every other month what they're paying every month. So the only thing that disturbed me a little bit, I think that we knew the EPA was going to mandate this, and I think we should have started collecting a little lesser amount a little sooner, to not have such an impact on some people.
Okay. Dan?
Sewer plant is very expensive. The reason it's here is because it hasn't been built already. We should have looked at it quite a few years ago, just didn't happen. There's always a thought, do you put in, put money into what's there, so you don't have to spend as much, or do you go ahead and quote-unquote "bite the bullet" and make the big purchase and do what we need to do? It was necessary. If we wouldn't have done it, there would have been EPA regulations. I agree, we should have put money ahead, so it wouldn't be as big of a problem now, or big as of a bill. However, some people criticize the schools for putting money ahead, or in their accounts to try to plan for things coming in the future. So some people get upset if you try to save money for future expenses, others get upset if you don't put money back. It is what is necessary. I do believe our rates are still better than other communities.
Okay, thank you. This will be our last question, and then we'll go to closing statements after that. So, and Steve, you will answer this one first. Do you believe homelessness is a concern in East Peoria, and if so, what role should the city play in addressing this problem?
Well, thank you, and it's definitely a concern. There is homelessness around here. One of the things that I was really amazed at when I got on the high school board was the level of free and reduced lunches that we provide in our school, in both our elementary and our high school. So I know, I know that is out there, and I believe the city has to work with the community organizations that are already out there. There are a number of organizations that can help you with those kind of programs, and we just have to make sure that those people that are out there know what those programs are, everything from, for food, for clothing, and shelter.
Seth?
Yes, as far as the schools go, homelessness is any student, a homeless student is anybody who's living in a shelter, living in a car, living in a hotel, living in a camper tent, anybody who's living with a relative who doesn't have basically their own place to call home. And I've seen the numbers for East Peoria Community High School, and I've seen the numbers for East Peoria District 86, and they have quite a few kids that are considered homeless, or at least that the schools consider homeless. So I think it's, it's an issue, I think it's probably an issue with the youth in our community, more so necessarily than with the adults in the community. And I think the way you solve that problem, I'm not sure you can solve that problem, I'm not sure a city council can solve that problem, but I think that we can at least try to help guide people in the right direction, guide the schools in the right direction, or, as I heard Dan say, people talking in Kroger to you or out and about in the community, we can help guide people to the community organizations and agencies that are out there to help the students, kids, and adults who struggle with poverty and struggle with homelessness.
Thank you. Norm?
Okay. I've not seen homeless in East Peoria. I'm sure that it probably does exist. I have seen it in Peoria. Of course, in Peoria, I see a lot of people standing around, help, anything, any food, anything will help, you know? I do know for a fact that sometimes we get fooled by some of these people out, where my wife works in Pioneer Park, Reggie stands there every day. Reggie's making an awful good living, collecting money. So, you know, we've got to be careful about that, but I think it would be best to partner with the Salvation Armies and the other local organizations that do, do help the homeless.
Okay. Dan?
We have a huge homeless problem in East Peoria. I'll admit, I have a bit of an advantage. I work in emergency services, and I see it all the time. I can take you where they are. They are living under the overpasses, they're living at different places, that they have little communities. They are here. You don't see homeless out, because often they try to hide from places, or people like the police, because our police do an excellent job of trying to make it so they don't cause problems in our community. I think the biggest problem, or the biggest thing that could help our homeless population is mental health. Mayor Mingus has been involved in mental health for a long time. Not saying you're old, sir, but our state, unfortunately, has dropped the ball when it comes to mental health. They've done away with mental health assistance, which has caused many more people to become homeless. We do have a problem in town. Our police are the first ones to come in contact with them. They do a great job. Sometimes they need more resources, though, to do even better.
Thank you. Mark?
Well, not to sound like a broken record, but, you know, again, homelessness, we may not have a visible outward homelessness issue, but I think we should always be concerned about our fellow citizens, whether they're, whether we can see that they're homeless, and I think the, between the schools, our police, our churches, again, we need to work to identify individuals in need, and then connect them with the resources, because our city's got many, from church pantries, many resources, John, moms that, moms that care at the high school, so there's many resources, we just got to try to work to get those people in need with those resources.
Okay. Now we'll go to closing statements. Since Seth was last for his opening statement, he gets to be first for his closing statement, and one minute for each of our candidates.
I'd like to thank everybody again for coming out and listening to us. There's some information about me. I put a postcard out there, it's got my contact information, it's got my cell phone and my email. If there's any questions that you have for me, if you want to know where I stand on something and didn't get the opportunity to have the question asked, or if there's a question that was asked to the mayoral candidates that you want to know where my opinion is on that, please contact me, shoot me an email, give me a phone call. I'd be more than willing to answer any questions, or sit down and talk to anybody who's willing to talk. Other than that, I'm asking for your vote on April 2nd, and I appreciate, I'd appreciate that. Thank you.
Norm?
Again, I would like to thank all of you for taking time out of your evenings to get involved. That's important, to make our city grow. I feel qualified to be in a city council with my past business experience. Being retired, I have the time now to serve, and I promise you that I will serve all of the citizens of East Peoria. I have no hidden agendas. My loyalty will only be to the citizens that elect me, and again, anytime there's an issue, I will respond back to you. You may not always like the answer I'm going to give you, but it's going to be an honest, transparent answer.
Thank you. Dan?
We live in a great community. I've worked in many communities around this area. East Peoria has an extremely bright future, and it's because of areas like you're sitting in now. in now, this will turn into a financial catalyst into the future, something to look really forward to. We are in good shape. I know we talk about the problems, because those are things that we want to fix. I appreciate being on the city council, and I appreciate all of you taking your time this evening to come, listen to us, try to get to know us a little bit better, and my promise to you is I will be the most approachable person that you can. I've kind of known, I hand my cellphone out to everybody, 309-251-9174. People joke with me about that, but I mean it. I want people to get in contact with me. I appreciate you being here, I appreciate your vote.
Mark?
Again, I'd like to thank you for all coming out and being informed. I think the city has done some great things. We, you know, we've got a lot of development that we need to be proud of, but I think we're at a crossroads where we need to make slight change right now. We need to refocus again on some of the basic services, and even if you look at some of how we do some of our budgeting and planning and appropriating, you know, pull back a little bit and get some focus on there, build a plan, go by that plan, and I believe with my experience, my leadership, planning, budgeting, that I can be, contribute to improving the city for the better and for all, and I would look forward to serving with, for anybody and everybody in the city. And I'd like to ask for your vote, Mark Hill, on April 2nd.
And Steve?
Well, like a lot of what they've said, I want to thank, first thank the League of Women Voters for putting this on, and then also for the library for hosting it. I'd like to thank you all for attending. I'd also like to thank all the previous councils that have laid the groundwork for this tremendous city, and the beautiful growth we have, you know, everything from Eastside Center to the Levy District and all the projects in between. We're all guys that were just like the people that are up here that wanted to serve their community. So I hope on April 2nd you'll go to the polls, and I hope you'll please consider voting for me, Steve Matheny.
Thank you very much, gentlemen, and all of you. I'd like to add my thanks to all of you for coming. This is election season, and the League has done several of these, and have a couple more that we're going to do. This is a fabulous turnout. Thanks to the library for inviting us to participate. Thanks for being on public access television, that's great, we aren't usually on TV. So I'm hoping I have combed and I look okay. So thank you all for being here, and enjoy the rest of your evening.